All right, good evening. I'm Owen at 7:00. I'd like to call the April 9th meeting of the Grammy zoning, zoning commission to order. If you could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll do our commission check-in as we do. I'm Mark Lockwood, the commission chair, and I'll start from my far right.
Eric Lukienville, member.
Paula Johnson, Alton.
Mark Myers, vice chair.
Bob Lavitt, member.
Steve Muller, member.
Brennan Shanahan, member.
We have, Commissioner Chinney is out today. Paula will be sitting in. Also, Meg is with us, and she participated in the last session on one of our public hearings, application, so she'll participate when we get to that part of it. Next on our list is public session. Does anyone wish to speak to the commission about an item not on the agenda or subject to a public hearing? Please come forward at this time.
I know she was talking about 280. Does that also include the wall?
The, what's in front of us is the, just the sign. But if you want to comment about the wall, we'd be welcome to.
I just wanted to know what.
Can you just introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Terri's back. I live next to 280, between the lawyer's office and 280. I just wanted to know if that was going to be finished, that stone wall?
Okay. Comment staked and we can.
I have heard. I do heard they're going to do something to it.
That might come up in the discussion today at the sign. You're welcome to bring it up in the public hearing if you like.
In the public hearing?
There's a public hearing at the sign today, yes.
Okay.
So if it's.
I never know when I can speak or not, so.
No, it's okay. The walls are separate issue, but since the sign's on the wall, you're welcome. I would have you come back at the public hearing. Okay? Thank you. Great?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Anyone else in the audience for public session? Anyone on Zoom? Not seen anyone else for Zoom or the crowd. We will close public session. Next, we move on to item number five, action on the minutes of March the 26th. I was not here, but I did see, I still call it a tape, but I saw the tape, even though, Mark, it's not a tape, I know. But I will let the commission, if there's any discussion for them, if there, if there isn't. If not, I'll take a motion. Don't move.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to approve the minutes as presented, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstain. I will abstain. Minutes are passed. Next on our agenda is item six, public hearings. We have three public hearings tonight. One is a continuation of a public hearing that we have already in process for site plan modification and special permit under the regulations for local property at 563 Salmon Brook Street. It was noted that we did have a walk-through yesterday. Have you had minutes for that?
Not in this pack.
Okay, that'll be next.
Yes.
So I guess I'll turn it over. I was not at the walk-through, but I am familiar with the property and I've been over there before. I will ask the applicant if you'd like to come up. I know you've been here, but just have to have you introduce yourself.
John Khan, 563 Salmon Brook Street.
So I guess I'll ask the commissioner, if you have anything, I'll let the applicant start off, if you have anything, if you want to add from the visit or anything else, since the last meeting I know, Vice Chair Myers had gone through the meeting to do something.
Yep, you know, I reviewed the minutes with Abby, and everything looks good. We had the site visit yesterday. Were we able to run the mill? We took readings at the property border as well. I don't know if everyone's been briefed on that. So we had like 64 dB at the, at the burn, which is the back property border, which is a, you know, data point. Yep, so a reading was taken at the back border up there by the marker.
Yes, sorry about that. So at the applicant's request, I did have a site visit earlier in the day at 11:00 AM to take readings, because that would be consistent with the draft condition of approval regarding the operation of the sawmill. So at that back corner, without anything running, it was, you know, low 40s, so just background ambient noise. When the machine was turned on, it was below to mid 50s, and it was, you know, the hum in the background, which I'm sure the commissioner, the commission heard during the site visit. At the 11:00 AM site visit, the, there was no active cutting or sawing or anything. So I took the reading during the site visit in the evening, and at that time, when it was actually operational, it was low to mid 60s.
Yeah, so 60 to 65 dB by the Yale Environmental Health and Safety Board is business office noise, and then 60s, 70s considered normal conversation. Vacuum cleaner would be 75 dB, which is, logists have logarithmic scale, dBs are exponential. So, so we're talking 65, and that was full throttle. I throttled both times and caught, I mean, people were there, so. Just to give you an idea of what we're, that the noise level we're talking about, so it's not, you know, now we have a understanding what that is. Everything else in, well, it looked good to me. I mean, I didn't have any.
Any comments on the site plan from staff review from the last time?
Yeah, so looking through some other conditions and then what was shown on the site plan, there was some clarification about the parking spaces out front, and I know during the site visit yesterday, it was noted that there was some equipment, trailers parked in the parking spaces in front of the building, and as shown on the site plan, those are just open parking spaces. So there's, there's nothing noted about, you know, equipment or parking for anything like that. The only thing in front of the building would be that equipment and finished product display area. So during the site visit, earlier in the day, the applicant had mentioned that he intended to move those trailers and equipment to the rear of the building, and please, at any time, jump in.
Oh, that's correct.
To the outdoor storage area, finished slash semi-finished product area, where during the site visit, that's where logs were currently stored. So if that is the plan, I would suggest that the site plan be modified to clarify that there would also be equipment and trailer parking in that area. And then there was a note still about the berm on the site plan, so the commission sawed the berm in person during the site visit, but it's still a little unclear from the site plan, because it looks like the fence extends the entire way, and I understand that's not, you know, the point of that, you know, the fence would be replacing where the existing stockade fence is, and then the berm would pick up where it's currently located. So just those adjustments to the site plan.
With another fence, a fancier fence on the restaurant side.
And the, the site plan does show a fence from the front corner, back behind the equipment and finished product display, running the length of the property line, but it does stop short of that back corner. You can kind of see it outlined in red there. It extends right to the, you know, to the end of the log storage area.
Right, that would be like a 1 by 12 board, stained board fence, the nice display fence that we would put up.
Abby, has there ever been a sound complaint from the neighborhood?
No, we have not received any noise complaints.
Are there any questions, sir?
You know, I just noted in the site walk yesterday that the equipment was out front in the parking spaces. Is there any specific number of parking spaces that are designated for the antique shop, or is it just for the building itself?
It's, based on the zoning regulations, it's for the building itself.
And how many are required?
Yes, so.
For public access?
Yes, so based on the square footage of the building, all of those spaces up front would be required.
Required?
Yes.
Right, so that, even in the north corner where you had the four trailers, and you talked about maybe leaving them there, they can't be left there. Those are parking spaces.
It's got to be vacant. Okay, so all the, all the whole front rows need to be vacant?
Mm-hmm.
Understood. That's no problem. Easily done.
One thing I'd like to bring up, you know, I've been looking at this, and I watched the, the recording from last time, not the tape, and the discussion is, I went back to some fundamentals, which is our regulations. This started out as an outdoor storage application, correct, Abby?
Yes, and for some outdoor activities.
Pushing outdoor activities. And we've got the retail sales, and then we're back, and what I'm struggling with is our regulations today. This is the business zone, right? It's not the industrial zone, it's not a manufacturing location. I'm having difficulty seeing where your sawmilling operation outside fits into our regulations, and I wanted to ask that with the commission as well, because again, it's retail sales, commercial services, you know, like, like, financial, not, not manufacturing, and I think it also has photography studios, and if I look at the other restaurants are in that zone, so if I look at the type of businesses are in there, it's not really, I'm kind of struggling with that piece of it, you know, talking decibels and this, but I'm not commenting on the merits, whether it's a good idea, but we have to, we have to follow our regulations. And I kind of wanted to step back before we keep asking a lot of questions about this, about discussion with both the applicant and the commission, why we have the public hearing still open, if we really are following our regulations when it comes to the, you know, sawmilling. I saw the pictures that were submitted, you know, it's custom sawmilling, woods coming in, and, you know, if that was done in a retail zone, then, you know, was that something, if somebody brings in a grinder to grind up scrap metal in the parking lot, I mean, that's not really the intent there. So that's kind of something I wanted to bring up to the commission, you know, the applicant can comment, of course.
Sure.
Anybody in the commission has any other thoughts about the regulations themselves?
I have, thinking about this, there's a difference between woodworking and sawmill. And the woodworking part of your business, I think, belongs in the zone. That is compatible, having your options of having your boards that are already pre-cut, that you've done offsite, and having them layered up there so somebody can come in and pick out the right board for their, for their counter, that makes sense. But the actual sawing and bringing in piles of raw lumber does not seem to me to be, well, in our regulations, it says suitable location for use, neighborhood compatibility, environmental capability. I think when you look at the neighborhood, you have a tire operation, it's all inside. Next door, you have the possibility of two restaurants. I'm thinking, and understand, I'm all for what you're trying to do, but I'm thinking that the sawmill part, if you could do that somewhere else, it would be just golden. I don't know whether that's a possibility.
Yeah, predominantly, it is, it is done offsite. This is not a primary, I don't primarily saw there, right? So kind of recap to the first meeting, there was an 80 by 40 car shelter, what's the brand name?
Clearspan.
Clearspan, I'm sorry. Clearspan, there was an 80 by 40 Clearspan, we wanted to bring up, so we could do some, you know, do this inside when we needed to. The commission said they didn't like those type of buildings, which is understood and taken. So we're currently, like, we had Clearspan out there Thursday to quote out the steel building, right? So we're looking at our options for a nice, like a Morton-style building. I got a Morton quote, which is very expensive. So Clearspan, just give us a quote, and now we're going out for concrete quotes, because that was rather expensive through Clearspan. So the idea is not to do this in the parking lot, I mean, you used to be there, right? That's not a, that's not a sustainable thing that we want to do, right? So primarily, it's on offsite. There are times where we do, you know, mill there, which is, which is why we're here trying to have discussion, but I'd like to bring that inside and close, so it's not a, you know, no one is bothered by it, right? It will take a little bit of time to get that building, it's expensive. And so this is kind of like a bridge gap to get there. I want to do a Clearspan, but I understand that you don't want to see that type of building, so I understand. I like, I like a nice building, so, so we'll get there, it's just gonna take a little bit of time.
I guess, to get back to the commissioner's point there, you know, the, the business is great, you know, live edge, you know, boards are wonderful, you know, all kinds of great woodworking purposes for that material. And the sawmill aspect of it is, you know, if you're only doing very limited, then it seems like, why would you need to invest a lot of money in a big structure to put a sawmill in it?
Or we would sort wind inside as well.
You know, so then, if you put a sawmill inside, it's still a sawmill, you know, most sawmills are under a roof and they're sawing, you know, thousands of board feet a day, so it's not zoned to be a sawmill, you know? So even if you put it inside, you're saying you're just going to ramp up your production and sawing, because now it's inside. So I'm kind of torn with the whole aspect of, is it a woodworking sawmill or is it a sawmill? You advertise that it's a sawmill on your custom saw, sawmill.
I do portable milling all the time. Yep, we saw logs under all the time with people. It's portable, right? I take it everywhere I saw on site, just got to jog in North Granby Saturday.
Well, portable, you know, that's a whole, then you're just parking it on the property, and you're hooking it up, and you're leaving, and you're sawing.
Correct, correct.
In someone's yard.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
I do struggle with the whole sawmilling aspect, because you're bringing in all that raw material, you know, it's gotten way out of hand, you know, you admitted that, you know, someone came in and brought in, you know, truckloads of material, and you're trying to confine it to a 30 by 60, which is still, you know, that's a substantial pile of logs that you could put there, you know, 20,000 foot feet, size 30 by 60, you know, 12 feet tall. So I don't know, you know, you're looking to saw on a yearly basis, and if you hit a certain level of sawing, now you're a sawmill, not a woodworking shop.
Yeah, I mean, that's not the primary use, and we, I thought we put that in the, in the clause, right?
And we have to go by the regulation, right? So if you look at our business C2 regulation, which I went back again several times to look at, I'm making this up, the regulation said you could have a Coke machine, but it didn't say you could have a, it said no Pepsi machines. Even though you, you know, I'm going to get my Coke contract, but right now I just do my Pepsi contract. We couldn't allow that, right? Because it doesn't, the regulation's not clear. I'm not using a good example, but I'm trying to, the regulations have to specifically allow it, am I saying it, Abby? They're, am I saying inclusionary regulation? So they have to state what it is, and if it doesn't allow for this type of production, even if we all of us say it's a great idea, we can't allow it because the zone doesn't allow it. We have to go through a different process where, it's called a text amendment, where an applicant brings it in. So that's what I'm bringing up today, when Commissioner Shanahan and Johnson are also speaking. So I just wanted to bring that out today before we kept pointing on, that I have a concern about even meeting, this is again, the sawmilling criteria portion, even meeting the underlying allowable uses in the zone.
Let me try and explain why I am troubled by the sawmilling aspect of the operation. Our regulations require us to make a determination that the proposed use will not have any detrimental effects upon the public health, safety, welfare, or property values, and that the proposed use will not conflict with the purposes of these regulations. The way I look at it, we have sat as a commission since sometime in the 1950s, Paula and I and others on the commission have sat and wrestled with these ideas, and when we came up with commercial zones and industrial zones, we thought there should be a clear distinction between what is commercial and what is industrial. When I toured your property and looked at the sawmilling operation, the conclusion I ended up with, even though I am sympathetic with your position, my conclusion is, you are trying to shoehorn an industrial operation onto a site which is zoned commercial. It, to me, it's, it's very simple. I don't think it would be appropriate for the, this commission to approve the kinds of uses you've got that involve sawmilling. Unfortunately, I think you need to do it somewhere else. I wish we were not here, because if you, if you had come to the commission before setting up this operation on the property, I think we could have given you very clear guidance that sawmilling was not something that we were interested in seeing. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. I don't know whether, obviously, my remarks don't bind any other member of the commission nor the commission entirely, but that's the way I look at it.
Meg?
I think there's something to scale, too. Like, to your point, if you're going to build a large structure, it's probably going to happen more, I would imagine, but industrial scale versus business is very different.
Any comments from the staff side about what we're talking about? Do you concur with our reading, or might the regulations proceed to?
So in one of my earlier memos, I brought up that this use, the sawmill specifically, would have to be accessory, and at a certain point, it's a question of, when is it no longer accessory? Even if it is accessory, is it appropriate outside? So I think that's really what this comes down to.
Is it accessories?
And is it appropriate, yeah, outside, as an outdoor activity in that zone?
Commercial zone, I think it's important for us to realize that.
So if I could summarize what they ask, is that, so we have outdoor storage, correct? And then the retail sale of display outside, is that correct? And then the other, the last part was the, the sawmill. Those are the three asks. And then we have disconformance in general to the site plan, the parking spaces and things that we're talking about. Is, is the commission, so again, while the applicant is here, it sounds like the storage aspect and the retail sales, display outside, that those, I read the regulation, those seem to me to fit in what we have in other parts. Do that, Commissioner, can you? And Abby, the site plan questions that we raised today, if we did close the public hearing, can we still have the applicant as a condition modify to what we talked about, or we have to keep the hearing open for a site plan?
So the commission has in the past approved a site plan subject to making specific revisions. So if that's something the commission is inclined to do, I'd say the specific conditions would be adding a note that that outdoor storage area, finished slash semi-finished product area was to also include trailer parking and equipment storage. And then the, one of the number three condition, the A, would have to be modified to just reflect that, the modified language on that outdoor storage area, including the trailer and equipment parking. And then it could be conditioned on clarifying the, the location of the berm and the height.
Would that be something acceptable to you if the commission went that way?
Yeah, for those, those additions, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, we spoke about that. Yeah, we had to wait for it.
And then what do we say about sawmills? Do you have, just have a statement that there is to be no sawmilling?
Well, so I don't, so this is where I get hung up. I spent some time on the regs, and I have the regs here, and Abby brings up the point about accessory use, so, and we spoke to this a little bit when I was chair in the last meeting. I believe if a customer were to walk in to his store, which sells live edge slabs, among other things, but that's his primary business, that's what he's, he's still want to focus on, and somebody says, I need a live edge slab, and there's not one on the retail showroom, but he walks outside and he says, that log looks great, cut me three inches out of the middle. That, to me, feels like accessory use, and I could make a case for him to be able to do that, but no other milling. It has to be directly related to just the sale of live edge slabs. It can't be to mill other people's lumber. I know the sign that's in front says, we'll mill your logs. I wish the sign said, we'll mill your logs on your property. I hold that log.
Yeah, that's fine.
Is not inviting people to go dump truck trails worth of logs on your property to mill them.
We could change that, that's no problem.
But.
I wasn't thinking about that at the time.
I know it seems extremely difficult for us to craft something that the ZEO officer can deal with, but.
This is what I'm thinking, yeah.
But regardless, it does seem reasonable to me that for a very limited use, even more limited than might be in here as a recommended language, that we talked about, our, within a small window per day, even limiting it beyond that as a form of a compromise to avoid the, any perception whatsoever that he's running a commercial sawmill. If, you know, I don't, I'm throwing it out there, I do struggle with the accessory use clause for the C2 zone, and whether or not resawing an existing slab he might have in his showroom, fitting it out, changing its dimensions, or otherwise is an accessory use. Commissioner Myers, I agree with you, that's woodworking.
That's woodworking, yeah.
Fits with.
It does.
The zone of it, but, you know, that sawmill is, you know.
We'd have to figure out a way to limit that.
It's built to do more than, you know.
But I guess.
Saw one more a week.
Agreed, which is why he has it to bring to other people's locations.
So Eric, how do, how do, and I, I'm with you, where you're trying to go. Having a pile of 15 or 20 or 30 tree log, tree trunks, that's a sawmill.
I, yeah, I agree.
So, do you remember that he can have four of them? I mean, there, again, we're dealing with our poor enforcement officer. We can't have him going over a week, and it's a pain for you, and it's a pain for everybody. How many logs you have to, oh, you have four, that's fine. So I, this is where, how do you, how do you draw that line?
Don't know, but that's why I wanted to bring it up. I think we owe it to have a good, healthy discussion on all the angles, and then.
I think it's woodworking, which, I mean, if you go to a big box store, there's a 10 foot two by four, I need a cut in half. They do it right in the store. That's woodworking, versus bringing in the tree and making a rough cut for me. So I think you can have that as accessory. Does it have to be outside? I think we're going to struggle with some of that. If it was all inside, do we not, like, like the box stores?
Yeah, but that's a sawmill, he has a portable one, so he can bring to, to other people's properties, it can't, it's too big to be inside.
I mean, if it's a single cut, I mean, I think we can have a discussion around, somebody comes in and buys something off, I don't know if you buy stuff off the shelf in your store there, but, you know, I need this cut to size, you know, fine. I agree with you.
You'd probably do that inside.
I think we're going to.
Maybe not, they're big. I think that's something that we should, we should have a discussion about. Well, the log storage area, Paula, you brought it up, I mean, it's, that's all of an area of 15,000, 20,000 foot feet, if you packed it full of logs. That's, again, that's commercial sign, that's not custom sign.
I mean, if it's limited to an hour a day, it's not anywhere near industrial sign. I'm one guy. I mean, you can buy anything.
Why do you need that kind of volume of inventory sitting out there?
Oh, because when you get opportunity to get, like walnut, you get it. You know, you don't say no. You have to, you know, if you have an opportunity to get, like walnut from North Granby, which I did, I gotta get it. That's, you know, that's very important. It's that unique 48-inch log that you need, that you're like, this is going to be a beautiful slab. So that's kind of, you know, the unique part of it, it's like, you, you don't get it every day, right? It's not like we're not sawing floor, you know what I mean? So like, you're not looking for pine and taking truckloads of it, but when you get that unique piece, you need to get it. So that's kind of, you know, part of the unique craftsman of, oh, walnut, oh, you know, that, that pile that's back there that's being removed, that'll be gone. The log truck couldn't come last week, it was going to rain, but that'll be gone, and it'll be cleaned up. So I mean, maybe another site visit when it's cleaned up, you're going to get a good idea of what it looks like, and, you know, then, and we're limited to eight feet high, you know what I mean, as part of the fencing height, where it's going to be eight feet high, you know, so it's, we're not trying to make it, you know, a mess, but you're not running an industrial sawmilling operation for an hour a day. That didn't happen.
We don't even saw every day.
I think what we're saying is that you would be, again, I'm going to use my box store, I come into your, your store, and I'm like, I like this wood, can you?
Yep.
Trim a couple.
Recover nuzzle, yep.
But not, I got these walnut logs for an hour a day, I'm going to make slabs out of them. That's a sawmill. And I think that's the distinction we're looking at is.
Understood.
We'll, we're looking at, you know, the woodworking aspect versus the sawmilling aspect.
Okay.
Okay, and I think that's, I understand the commission, right?
Yeah.
Well, I just got to say, I'm, I'm just not persuaded that limiting something to an hour a day or two hours a day converts something that's industrial into something that's not industrial. To me, it's still industrial, and if we're going to have any credibility with the public and with other people who would want to occupy a commercial zone with industrial activities, I think. would want to occupy a commercial zone with industrial activities, I think our credibility is shot. The next guy can come in and say, well, yeah, it's kind of industrial, but I'm only going to do it now and then, you know, an hour a day, half an hour a day. I, I think that puts us in an impossible position. To me, it looks industrial, it feels industrial, and to me, the one-hour limitation just doesn't really cut it. Sorry, it just doesn't.
Just, we'll get some more questions, but since it is a public, our public hearing's still open, I will ask if there's any members of the public that would like to speak on this. Application, please, come forward. Anyone on the Zoom? Can't see, but I'll ask. Somebody, somebody. Come on up. Please introduce yourself and address.
My name is Jeff Salinardi from 17 East Street. Again, I'm going to reiterate, been in the last few of these meetings, I feel the board is really struggling to come to some kind of consensus to, like you said, shoehorn. In the zoning regulations, you have industrial and it lists the word sawmill. That's an industrial zone. This is not an industrial zone. You're looking to put a special permit to allow an industrial activity. I don't even think the board has the right to do that. I mean, I'm not an attorney standing here, but I think you're really stretching to put an industrial activity onto this property. And I feel like you're doing a lot of, you're just sort of, you're really trying. I give you credit for that, but at the end of the day, when, and maybe you can do a show of hands, when you all visited out there, who would want that in their backyard? Anybody on the board? I mean, it's a disaster. I mean, sorry, it's, it's been long enough. It's been noted that the property has had problems. The board has said this property needs to get cleaned up. Quite honestly, in my opinion, and I don't live right there, thankfully, I live a couple houses away, it's gotten worse. Now there's a gigantic pile of wood chips rotting and molding, and I don't know if that's the berm we're talking about, but I don't, I hope that's not the berm, just a rotting pile of wood chips, because, you know, these people who live beside me here, they're going to put up with, like you said, the mold and the bugs and the rodents and whatever else that wants to live in that. Now they got this 12-foot pile of wood chips. I mean, like, nothing is being done, call it correctly, it's just, it's going from bad to worse, and I think the board really needs to settle in and figure out, you know, look at the track record of what's going on on this property. It's not that great, you know? It, it sounds like a good idea, but in, in practice, I really feel bad. I feel bad for the tire shop next door, I feel bad for the restaurant next door. You know, when people go there to get a bagel in the morning or an omelet, are they going to be smelling rotting mulch this summer? I mean, come on. Anyway, that's, that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brittany Ashmore. We live at 20 Sawmill Road, so this is our backyard. We don't really understand what's going on here. We missed the last meeting, but a couple of questions, because honestly, I'm a little lost. What is the berm? Like, what does it do? Because it is just a bunch of wood chips and then it goes all the way over, but there's a huge, like, it's all, all across. And then, like, is there a point to it? I don't understand if it's supposed to be doing something over there. But I think that's like our biggest problem, that and the logs, because it's our entire backyard and we don't understand what it's doing. So that's kind of our only problem.
Thank you. Was there anyone on Zoom? Bring it back up, then, the applicant wants to come back up. Do you want to, anything you want to comment on?
Nope, except that we're still cleaning up, you know, and the work's just begun, the fence hasn't been put up yet, and I've sent letters and knocked on doors and I haven't spoken.
Knocked, knocked once.
I have.
Nine tries.
I have, and I spoke to your neighbor as well.
Just keep, just a question, please.
So we can recoup and talk and so, you know, we can settle on something that you like appearance-wise. Jeff, I think you should disclose your history with me and the property.
Excuse me, sir? The trust of commission.
Yeah, I think that Jeff should disclose his history with the property and his bone to paint with me. He hasn't told you guys what the, his bone is with me. He's been trying to buy the property that I own, that abuts his property, and he's come over to Scruggs a couple of times and yelled at me when I first bought the place, so I think that everyone should be aware of that. I have no further comments.
I have a question, the question, the berm came up, and when I was there yesterday, it did look like just saw, saw chips. Brenna, you know more about forestry than I do, that really isn't a berm, it's a pile of saw chips, right?
It's just the wood chips are just pushed up into the form of a berm. And you talked about putting plantings on there, but those wood chips are going to steal some, as they rock and it robs much nitrogen from any type of soil, they're going to kill any plants, they're going to burn up, you know, try to plant them on wood chips.
Are they going to get moldy, like when I was...
I don't know about mold, but they'll eventually break down, turn into topsoil over 10, 15 years, so it will be topsoil eventually.
Any other comments? Abby, anything else?
No.
Anything else you'd like to... Can, I think we've had the public hearing for quite, is there anything we don't need to, the applicant, if we do the site plan, can come back as a condition, right? We don't need to keep the hearing open?
Correct. So the only thing would be if the commission has any questions about any of the conditions for clarification or anything else that needs clarification before the discussion starts.
So I have a, Jeff, this has come as a whole package. Can we approve the storage of the things for sale, his display, his parking, his woodworking and say the sawmill is not acceptable? So we can do that?
Yes, so that's, and that's why the conditions are broken out.
Okay.
So there could be modifications to the conditions.
I want to make sure we understood that.
And then obviously, the site plan would have to be revised to reflect, yeah, reflect that.
Anyone else in the commission have any clarification points, feel the need to keep the hearing open? I, for one, would like to suggest we close the hearing so we can start deliberations, because I think we have a lot of items to go over internally to the regulations and to all the testimony and information that's been presented, but...
Agreed.
I agree. Yeah. Maggie, you have anything else? So, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Then if that, then public speaker. Come on.
Paul, I'm on the road. So I just would like a clarification of the definition of what the berm is, what it's supposed to be made out of, what the purpose of it is intended for, and how it's supposed to help the ecosystem or environmentally friendly, water runoff, what is the purpose and the definition of the berm? What's it supposed to be made out of? Is it supposed to be made out of, you know, wood chips and topsoil?
Procedurally, the berms we have in town are normally made from soil with plantings on them, correct, commission?
But not wood chips?
We have not approved one made of wood chips, to my knowledge.
And the purpose of the berm would be...
There are buffers from other properties and they also, for, also transition for sight lines from property. If you look at the Stop &amp; Shop in front of it, that's a berm.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, without any objection, we will close the public hearing. The commission has 65 days to come to its decision. Most likely, we'll start a little bit on that later this evening on the agenda. Thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is an application for a special permit under the regulations for signs to 80 Sammerbrook. Vice Chair Myers could please read the call to the hearing.
Okay, there will be a public meeting hearing conducted by the P&amp;Z on Tuesday, April 9, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road. To hearing, consider the following item. Application seeking a special permit under zoning regulations, section 8.6.13, for two small wall-mounted signs that exceed the maximum square footage for a property located at 280 Sammerbrook Street, CC Zone. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the community development office.
Is the applicant or their representative here?
She's on Zoom.
Up on the Zoom.
Yes.
All right. Just please introduce yourself and address for the record, please.
My name is Sherri Thompson, and this is for 280 Sammerbrook Street.
We have the information from staff that you presented, so, but if you could, for the hearing, if you could just walk us through what your proposal is for the signs?
So my client would like to put a flat signage on the structure, the stone structure that is being built, both at, I'm sorry, here. There's two entrances that they would like to have approved. Apologies. It's on, it's on the north Sammerbrook Street side and also on the northern side. I'm not sure what other information that you need from me.
Are the signs lighted? Are you, I say north, you have two, it's Sammerbrook Street. Okay, because it says north side and south side. Is that what you're referring to when you say north Sammerbrook Street?
Yeah, north and south, yes.
You have two entrances, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so you're looking to put one on the south entrance and one on the north entrance?
Correct.
Okay. Just maybe just go through, again, just for the record, what they're made of, which you're, you know, you said there's no lighting to them, so are they reflective? What's, just go through the copy of the shoulder.
There's no reflection. It's just a flat handle that is 156 inches by 30 inches that would be attached just by tack-ons. It's flat against the surface, doesn't stand off at any sort. It is just a 3mm ACM, which is a lightweight aluminum composite. And it actually will be two panels titled right in the middle, but it'll be just attached to the surface very flat.
Are you, are you going to be doing anything to the wall behind the sign or is it going to stay just the way it is now?
No, we're not going to be doing anything to the wall structure. We would just be applying the ACM sign to the wall structure very simple with just some tack-ons and screws.
If I can clarify this, while the sign company won't be doing anything to the wall specifically, there are, the, the wall is not finished yet, it will be painted. So yes, it is not in its finished state.
Okay.
So I guess the question, question would be before the signs are installed, will you be finishing the wall and do you know how that finish will be?
She's the sign person, so she would...
I know, I stumped you.
I'm the sign company, so I...
That's a question that we don't necessarily need the answer for the sign, but I would like that, if you do talk to your client, would like to get that back to staff sometime. We've had that raised, you may hear it tonight in the hearing, and other people have raised that, so since the sign is going on the wall, I think that's an appropriate question for the commission to ask.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission?
I can see why you need two signs because of two entrances, but I'm not sure that there's really been an explanation for why they need to be so much bigger than what the regulation permits. The regulation is not bigger than nine square feet, and these are going to be 32.5 square feet, which is more than three times as big. I haven't seen a markup of what it would look like if they did conform with the regulation.
Are there scale drawings provided?
Well, there's scale drawings of...
Not to scale.
They're not to scale.
They're not to scale.
They're drawings of what the finished 32 by 5 would look like, but I don't see something that the nine-foot would look like. And I'm not sure, you know, what basis we have when the next guy comes in and wants a sign more than three times the size of this sign to say no. You know, we, we did approve oversized signs for the...
The grand?
Grand.
Which is...
Oh, we did, the grand.
Which is bigger.
Oh, which is even bigger.
That's way back, that's way back from the...
Okay. I was, I was going to say the medical, you know, urgent care center, because that's like a medical emergency thing. The grand is before my time, but, you know, I mean, we should probably be redoing the regulation if we're not applying it.
Well, I think the regulation's there for people to have the opportunity to put in a nine-square-foot sign without having to have, fill out. I think paperwork come before us get a zoning application. I think it serves the town very well for most small businesses. I think a large business like this, it is a very large property, as Abby pointed out in the application, it's a thousand square feet of frontage. The signs, as big as they feel like on paper, when juxtaposing them against the, the regulation, they really are dwarfed by the property. That's just my thoughts on it.
Well, you need them big enough that you can see, you could go by, but I'm wondering whether it's three times the size or, what did you say, Robert?
More than three times. Because it's not, nine square feet is what's permitted by regulations, 32.5. Three times would be 27 square feet.
There's some, but again, Paula, we've approved recently, even the bag sign.
I understand, I understand, and it came up fine.
Sure did. It's all about, to me, it's the fit and finish and the quality.
Exactly.
It's about the size and placement.
Placement and, and, because I, when I went by and I looked and I saw, the picture's not to scale, but it does give you a sense. And I thought, well, I would like it smaller, but then I happen to like smaller signs.
Brenna?
I have no comment.
Eric?
I, I looked at the, the signs and the photos and I did not have a negative reaction, so I guess it's okay.
It fits, it fits.
Sorry.
Yeah, it fits.
It's relative to the scale of the project.
It is relative to the scale of the project.
Anything else that you'd like to comment before we open it up to the public?
No.
Does any member of the public wish to comment on this application? Please come forward.
I'm in the wear, war zone, I call it, between 280 and the law firm. I just, it was my impression that that wall was going to look similar to the, the wall it used to be near the law firm, so I don't know if it's, you know, the wall, the, there used to be a brownstone, and I don't know if that's the color of what that wall's going to look like and whether it's nicely going to be painted.
We saw a rendering when, but I, I would love to see the rendering that they gave us when we approved it. That would be interesting to see.
You can actually find it online.
Do you know why I have this answer? Do we have something, anything?
Yes, so the, our, our contact, the station 2D, was actually in this week or late last week dropping off some forms, and I did ask him what the plan was for painting that wall in terms of timing, and he did tell me that they were trying to work with the crew to get someone out there. However, he did not provide a, a specific timeframe for that work to be done. So I will follow up again, though, and get some more information on that.
Did he provide a color?
I believe it is noted, yes, I just don't remember off the top of my head. Yeah.
I'm sure it's going to happen soon as weather's getting better for.
It has to be.
Yeah, it is getting a little bit better. Yep, so I will follow back, and I'll plan on hopefully having an update at the, the next meeting, the April 23 meeting.
So when, can you add to that update for me? I'd love to see, as Paula had suggested, a rendering of what the wall was supposed to look like when it was presented to me. Interestingly enough, in my travels recently, because the wall's been a point of discussion, I have spotted another one of those walls. It's obviously a preformed type of form used to make that wall. I spotted one, but the one I spotted was similar in height and identical in appearance, had a cap on it with a bull nose. I, it looked much better.
Did you take a picture of it?
I, I was moving pretty fast on the highway. Just, I'd be interested to know what our drawing looked like. I don't have the plans anymore.
Yep, I will take a look and provide an update.
Good.
I have been in discussions with them, just to put it out on the table, that they need to make sure their dumpsters are emptied frequently. There's been a lot of garbage that's gone on my property line.
That was actually brought up during a meeting.
I have plastic in my trees, so they have gone through and they, they've taken it out, but I regularly have to go over there and I'd like to have them be more regulated that once a week they walk it and clean it. Because it, it is north, and I've always had a lot of wind coming across that field. I mean, it's not against them. It's a lot of stuff that, you know, we've had a lot of wind, and it's coming across that. So I have discussed with them that, you know, we don't want to have the town, the center of town, get the impression that myself and 280 are having our garbage end up in the center of town. So I have asked them to kind of lease a little bit more, but I would like a little.
Building official.
Yes, our building official's been in touch, and every time, they've been pretty prompt in sending a crew out there to, to lease the, especially back along Hungary Road.
So you've contacted them?
Yes.
I've not contacted people about it. I just want to make that clear to them.
Yes, our building official has been in touch with them.
I try to be a very good neighbor to them. I haven't been complaining, but I would, I hope that they're going to be a good neighbor to me long-term. The other thing is, is there's a dog park, and I was just wondering when they're going to have that done, because there's a number of dogs that are walking. It's great to see, I have to tell you, I love the dogs.
I think what I'd take is, just specifically for the sign, I would strongly encourage you to, you can, I'm sure you've done it before, contact Abby's office at Community Development, and she can go through the site plan and the DBC.
Oh, no, yeah, I understand that. I just didn't know, because there's a lot of people walking their dogs and, you know, down in the center of town, which is really great, but it'd be nice if that dog park was done maybe a little sooner.
I just, you know, she can go through that, because it works at the. Thank you so much. Anyone on Zoom got the application? See anybody? Any other commissioner comments? Any other comments from the applicant?
No.
Okay, if there's no other comments, Abby, staff perspective?
Yep.
All right, if there's no other comments, they're going to close the public hearing. The commission has 65 days to come with a decision. We may talk about it later in the agenda. Thank you very much. Okay, continuing on the agenda, we have item number C. Application seeking a zone change from center edge to commercial center for property on Sammerbrook Street. Vice Chair Myers could read the call to the hearing.
There will be a public hearing conducted by the P and Z on Tuesday, March 26, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Granby Town Hall Meeting Room, 15 North Granby Road. To hear and consider the following items. Application seeking a zone change from center edge to commercial center for properties located at 254 and 256 Sammerbrook Street, filed at Z-2-24. At the hearing, interested persons may appear and written communications will be received. Copies of the proposals are on file in the Community Development Office.
Is there applicant or a representative here?
Good evening. My name is John Bigmira. I reside at 19D Street South, and I'm also the current owner of 254, 256 Sammerbrook Street. And again, I'm here to ask the committee to consider a zone change, taking the property from center edge to commercial center. And my proposal includes a comprehensive interior and exterior improvements to all three structures, which I'll show you in the call if we get up. The zone change would basically allow me to pursue a mixed use with the residential character of the house remaining intact, the print shop transitioning to a commercial use, and the three-car garage serving as an office and residential space. Next slide. So before I get started, I just wanted to kind of lay out and give everybody an aerial view of the property in relationship to where it's located on Sammerbrook Street and Hartford Ave. It has frontage on both streets. It's got about 200 feet of frontage on Hartford Ave. And under the current use today, I could do a handful of things. So I could keep it as a single-family dwelling. I could have a home occupation if I lived in the house. I could essentially knock the house down and plant corn, because it's got an agricultural use as well, which I have no intention to do that. I could put up a government building, have a attached accessory apartment, but I'd also need to live there as well, and then a family, child, or group home, which would be located in the residence. So under special permit today, I could have a professional office, financial services, which I believe can be released to a bank, and also a church, daycare, and breakfast. Again, I think I'd have to resign in the home itself. I'm asking to change the zone to, again, a commercial center, which would allow me to do, have a broader use, so I could do retail, service, multifamily, restaurants, or office space. One thing to note, everything under both special permit is, I would have to actually get approved to do anything still, so that's all regulated. Can you move to the next slide, please? And here, I just wanted to show you an aerial view of each zone. Orange here represents commercial edge zone, blue center commons, and tan is commercial center. Next slide. This shows the house as it is today for the first floor print. Again, my plan consists of dividing the house into three apartments, each having two bedrooms, all being affordable rents, averaging around $1,200 a month to rent these units. I currently own a similar property across the street from Geisler's. It's a three-unit building. Average rents are $1,200, so I have experience doing it. I've had 20 years-plus experience in the construction and real estate development area. I've done a lot in the town itself. So if you move to the next slide. So this is just color-coded showing each unit. Yellow, obviously being apartment one, light blue apartment two, and I'd call that purple, I guess, apartment three. So each unit would have roughly about 1,200 square feet. Unit one and two have two means of egress on the first floor, and all units will have updated kitchens, baths, HVAC, electrical plumbing. Next slide. This is the second-floor layout as it exists today. Next slide will show you that there are minor, basically, construction improvements to separate the units. We just need a firewall between each unit, and then again, a gate, all electrical plumbing, and a kitchenette to unit three, which would be upstairs. Actually, unit one shares the upstairs and the downstairs. So unit one's bedrooms are two upstairs. Next slide. So this is the garage. So my plan for the garage is, I'm currently in conversations with a speech and language business, which my wife owns and operates. She currently rents space in town, and she's looking for more easeable access. She needs first-floor access for her clients. And I propose to do office space on the first floor here and on the second floor, open loft apartment. Next slide. So this is just basically visual of what the building would look like. I would add additional windows to the front of the building and a center door. Next slide. This is just a kind of a rough layout of what the office space would look like. So she's currently a single business owner, doesn't have any employees. Typically, per office visits, expand about two hours on-site with normally two parents and a child. But there is potential for a second office, because as she grows the business, I wanted to consider another employee. Next slide. So this is the second floor, basically, of the garage, kind of an open loft concept. And the next slide will show you kind of a rough draft of what I want to do to create an office, I mean, a loft apartment on the second floor. The second floor also has an entrance in the rear of the building, separate entrance to get up to the. Next slide. For the print shop, so currently, I'm talking to a Granby resident who has an idea to open up a retail food and beverage shop. And again, major improvements to the building itself. I want to keep the characteristic of the building intact, but, but obviously, I'd have to do some improvements to it. New siding, new shakes, new windows, new doors, and depending on the use here, I would update the inside HVAC, electrical plumbing as well. There is an existing water line and a sewer that's in the floor. I don't know if it was ever connected to the house, but that's something I'd have to verify with the town. Next slide. This just shows kind of the current layout today. And then the next slide. Here, we were asked to do a preliminary parking plan based on each use for each building, which is shown here, 18 parking spots. Again, this is just a preliminary plan. We're very open and flexible to any other design. I think, in fact, the town would prefer that we connect to the rear property, which is a commercial parking lot for, well, where the Granby Pharmacy used to be, which is in the antique shop today, and the nail salon. This is just a layout of what the aerial parking would look like, just kind of parked up. So again, 18 spots, spots for, on the right-hand side, next to the garage, for my office, for my wife's office, and then in the center, between the print shop and the house, you would have 11 spaces there, and then two spaces to the garage. This is just a visible representation of what the parking would look like and feel like. My goal here is to create a mixed-use property to attract more people to Granby Center, more people who could afford to actually live in Granby Center and, you know, not be able to afford some of the higher rents in other areas, but have the ability to walk and shop local businesses. Then the next couple of slides just talk about some of the other properties surrounding and more southwest and north along Sammerbrook Street. So 255 Sammerbrook Street, which is directly across the street from my property. Here, the zoning is center commons. It's in the historic overlay district. This house is known as the old Gaines Hotel, listed on the Granby Historical website, currently used today as a three-unit apartment building. And actually, behind this is a childcare center. Next slide. This is 261 Sammerbrook Street, again, in the historic overlay district, listed on the Granby Historical website, known as the Loomis House, used in the past as an inn, as a tea house, and I believe medical services as well. Today, I believe it's being occupied as office space. However, I, I think it's make it, I'm not sure. Next slide. This is 4 East Granby Road, known as the Gracie House, again, on the Historical Society website, again, center commons, being used today as law offices. This is two-part place. I believe in the past, this was the old Granby Hotel, historic building. Today, the use is retail, service, and office. And this is, this falls within center commercial. Next slide. So this property, about to my property, it's in the rear of me. It's 911 Hartford Ave, directly, again, behind my house, again, home of the old Granby Pharmacy, today, antique shop, and nail salon. And I believe the bank is also part of this property as well. Further southwest is the Congregational Church, which is a church, and they also have a church hall as well, a commercial-led zone, historical overlay district. And then further down the road, heading towards Sammerbrook Park, on the corner of Sammerbrook Street and Pendleton Road, you have old Dr. Pendleton's Hospital here, which is a five-plus-unit apartment building, again, in the historical district, again, in the commercial edge level. And then finally, you have 208 Sammerbrook Street, which is the home of Granby Historical Society, like mine, in the historic overlay district, like mine, in the commercial edge district. I believe they operate here as a museum showcasing historical artifacts and homes. They also have a research library, and they operate a retail gift shop on the side. So with that, does anyone have any questions?
Just to clarify, the commission knows, but this was, we are not here discussing the use or the parking, or the applicant is showing that as a reason why he is proposing the zone change, correct, Abby?
Right.
So we're not here discussing any of the aspects, if you like this, or if the parking's right or wrong, or that, it's specifically on the zone change, and the applicant is showing that of why he wants the zone change, so he could ask for those things under a special permit in the future.
Yes.
But I'll, I'm sure there's a lot of questions from the commission, and would you like to go? So before you go, is there anything from a staff perspective? Signs have been up?
Yes, signs were posted. We received confirmation that all the butters received notification. The public hearing notice was noted March 26. However, the applicant did request that the public hearing be postponed, so that's why there is the difference in the date there.
And then also, for the record, we have correspondence from different residents, and including, the Sammerbrook Historical Society has notified and made for today detailed response and packet that was included.
Yes, and thank you for reminding me, too, because we did receive one letter about this application that came in today, so it wasn't posted online as part of the meeting packet, but the commission did get it, as did the applicant.
So I'm sorry, Paula, I interrupted.
So clarify for me, in the center commons, the Brignow properties, they are rentals without a homeowner. Now, is that because it's pre-existing, or is that able to be done in, in that zone?
So in the center common zone.
Wrote out a whole bunch of notes, but.
Yes, so by special permit, business or professional offices are allowed. Again, special permit. I don't know off the top of my head when approvals were sought for that property. It was before I was here, yes.
It's been, it's been a long time. Those have been rentals.
And I do believe there might also be a residential unit in that building as well in apartment.
Because it seems to me, one of the things you're looking for is the ability of, of having rentals without ownership being there. And I'm wondering if, if it was allowed in the center common zone, if that would, has less special permit options that might be more, make people more uncomfortable along that corner. In other words, would that be a better way to have gone?
So in the center common zone, multifamily is a permitted use. However, the property needs at least five acres or more.
Those, those don't have five acres.
And so.
Most of the properties, it must have been pre-existing. Okay, that answers my question.
Derek?
No, nothing now. Thank you. Nothing at the moment. Nothing.
The, the single-family house that is immediately next to you, is that multifamily or is it a single-family?
The one to the right of the property, if you're facing it from Sammer.
The one to the right of the property, if you're facing it from Salmonbrook Street?
South, it says south of you.
Yeah, south of you. 252...
I believe...
Across the way?
No, it's directly abutting you to the south.
It doesn't look as happy as it's...
It's a single-family.
No, that's a single-family.
The one across the street, you said, is three apartment?
The one across the street, I was going to say, is 255 Salmonbrook Street.
Is that, is that, whether you know or staff knows, is that all rentals, or does the owner live there?
That is all rentals.
So that's all rentals? And is the Dr. Pendleton property all rentals as well?
Correct.
So there are properties that are... There's no other immediate questions? I will, if you have anything else, we'll have you come back.
Okay.
So I know there's members of the public here, if you'd like to come up and speak on this application, please come forward.
Good job, Morgan. 221 Salmonbrook Street, the house with the daffodils in the front. I think you all have a letter that I wrote, and so I'm not going to read that again. But I read over it, and I really didn't emphasize, I don't think enough, the fact that you're not only the zoning commission, but also the planning commission. And one of the things under planning is planning the transportation routes in town. If you had to pick a site that had a less auspicious access than this site does, you would be hard-pressed to find. The traffic stacks up across Salmonbrook Street, even with the new improvements, it now stacks two lanes wide instead of one. Entering, and especially exiting, would be very difficult. The traffic sweeping around, heading down Hartford Avenue there, that access on that side, traffic is coming around now at a much increased rate due to the new improvements. And the traffic lanes are condensing at that point, so the traffic is trying to get aligned while somebody tries to pull out on the left. Right is bad enough, but left would be an entirely different kind of operation. So I think that's an important consideration for this site. A minute ago, there was talk about metals on Salmonbrook Street. I've lived in that house for 50 years. All those places that you mentioned have been rentals before I arrived.
That's definitely one.
There hasn't been a new rental property inserted up the street in a long time. As a, just a kind of a thought, you wonder if, in fact, the solution to Abby's comment about improving housing opportunities in Granby, if you're going to do it there, and maybe it should be for the whole town, that perhaps something should be developed, I'm not quite sure how it'd fit together, allowing multiple owner-occupied units within houses that exist in the year 2020. It'll give the opportunity to have additional units without disturbing necessarily the built environment, which, once it's gone, it is gone.
John, explain that again. I didn't quite understand where you were going, or maybe I couldn't hear you because you're talking softly.
The, that perhaps the solution to improving housing opportunities is to, within that area, and perhaps maybe in the whole town, but within that area, which seems to be the subject of discussion, would be to provide multiple owner-occupied units within any house that exists as of 2020 or some other date. In other words, all of those houses there could, in fact, have more than a single occupant. But that would be a separate process that you'd have to get into, definitely.
Not more like condos. Interesting angle.
Hi, Kate Bogley, 198R, Salmonbrook Street. Sorry, let's just... I'd like to speak in favor of the zone change. I think the market has spoken about this property and that the highest and best use is as a commercial venture. The house was on the market for over a year, and no family wanted to buy it, and this in a very competitive real estate market. It's very likely too close now to the much bigger road to be for a traditional, you know, family to want to live there. Creating smaller apartments still keeps it residential, but likely allows for a stronger business plan that's able to keep up with the maintenance costs of a house like that. If you could take a look at your map, I thought the map, it was up there, but the map was very compelling, actually, the most compelling thing when I opened up the meeting packet for today. You can see that all of the properties in the center, actually, that are along 189, are commercial center properties, except for this one. So it actually looks out of place in the zone than it is now. The only reason it probably was, I would imagine, excluded from the commercial center was because probably at the time, there was a family living there. But at this point, I don't think it makes as much sense, so you'll approve the change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Cara Marshall. I live at 45 Pushy Hill Road in Granby, and I also want to speak in favor of this and very excited by this proposal. I think this is the kind of development that Granby needs. It's a very important location, being right in the center of town and right across from the green. So whatever we do with that property, we'll continue to set the tone for what the, how the center develops. And I really think it needs life, so I was really excited by the prospect of perhaps having a cafe there. But I also feel that historic preservation is very important. Some of you may recognize that 45 Pushy Hill Road is on the National Register of Historic Places. I care a lot about historic preservation. I drive around and look at old houses and have strong opinions of what's been done, well done, and what hasn't.
Yes, yes.
One continued, the theme I've seen is how parking is treated with some historic homes. So just driving around, you may have seen 476 and 480 College Highway in Southwick is a very bad example. You've got a couple of very attractive old houses that have just had their plots completely paved over. I think 750 Hot Meadow Street in Simsbury is a really good example of how it's been done.
I am horrible with address numbers, so can you tell me like the place? Because I couldn't even tell you the address for like here someday, so...
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to get a PowerPoint together with some screenshots and didn't get it done in time. So 476 480 College Highway, that's on Southwick. 476 is the Red Colonial that is now a furniture store, so it's on the right...
It's on the corner of 57 there, the Southwick Road.
And then the other one next to it is like a law office, and it's just a lot of parking right around it. 750 Hot Meadow Street is like the coffee spot, I think, is right on Hot Meadow. I think that one is really well done. You've got a coffee shop that preserves the historic home, and then around back, you have an extensive retail development with parking there. So you have a long Hot Meadow Street, the historic streetscape, and no curb cuts, but the parking and the commercial activity happens around the back. So I think as you consider how this is developed, preserving that historic streetscape, preserving the historic fabric is very important. And I think this could be a great way, as proposed, to have, preserving the home, keeping it in economic use, encouraging walkability and vibrancy in the center. And I also think it's a really good thing to encourage conversions to small multifamily properties in the center. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, Bill's got you.
Hello there.
Hi, Bill.
Bill Ross, 239 Salmonbrook Street. And so, you know, I have not, I'm not against apartments. I walk my dog every day, twice a day, about three miles all around town, and I see what the apartments look like. I don't know how many of you have walked in town, but they look like dumps. I hate to say it. Maybe John's a little, I don't know. But they're not kept up. One of the apartments on, right across from the green, they still have their candy cane from Christmas. It's April. Do you guys want?
I guess not, I'm sorry.
Anyways, I'm not, you know, I submitted a packet that had parking in there. That's a little bit exaggerated, but there's still 18 cars, and as John mentioned, coming in and out, turning left on Hartford Avenue. You know, I guess you'll deal with that, whether it's approved or not, I believe. John mentioned, is John here, mentioned affordable apartments. I'm not sure what for it was. We own our house at 239 Salmonbrook Street. I have no idea what rents are at the Grand or the other apartments by Stop &amp; Shop or the new apartments, but $1,200 seems pretty reasonable to me. But do we really need more apartments in Granby? I mean, we've got 235 on Salmonbrook Street. The Grand has about 50 or so. That's almost 300. So we've got 350 apartments in Granby in the last five years. Just seems like a lot of apartments. I wish there was a better use of that, I wish somebody had bought that house. It's in the Historic District. What's to keep somebody from buying the house across the street? Not the apartment, but the Avery House at some point in time, or the house, just one house south. And then people will buy it, they come before the commission, they want to put two apartments there because nobody else bought the house. So we've got this iconic Historic District from the Historic Society up to the Green, but, you know, I've been in my front yard working, and I've seen people actually come park at the church and walk up and down our street because the houses look so nice. I'm not sure that's the case if they start turning to apartments. There must be a more creative way to deal with historic structures. The Center Study Committee is looking at turning the historic part of Granby into a local Historic District. If that happens, there's grants, and there's different ways to get funding to repair and upgrade those capex houses. And it seems like in Granby, in the center of town, the absentee landlords seems don't really care for much of their place. Has anybody been inside the Pendleton Apartments? He cut his grass once last year, once, so... That's all I've got to say. Thanks.
Peggy LaRoe, 17 Reed Hill Road, used to live in the center. Just remember the comments that were made by the woman who talked about creative use of historic properties and the fact that that was like the only house in Hartford Ave. that isn't, I guess you'd say, I can't remember, center edge or center commercial. But I think that that really highlights the thing, because this is a neighborhood. This stretch going down Salmonbrook Street, historic area, is different. And I like John Morgan's points. I like his string of pearls analogy, and it works for me. I've always thought it is creeping zone change, once you take that step, it's done. I'm disappointed that this is being given serious consideration before the Center Committee does its thing. Sometimes I feel like what happens when people make applications here is that the applicant has good intentions and is very creative, has come up with an idea, but it's very easy for the commission to feel like they've got to help the guy. He's got a piece of property, is constrained by how to do it. I like it in the terms of what I know you all know, which is the best interest of the town. And to me, even though I'm sensitive and compassionate, I don't think we should feel a need to rescue a property owner when there's problems doing what he might have liked to do. I sort of think of this property as wishing, maybe it could be two different things there, two different zones. And the location is horrible, the, in terms of traffic, traffic in and out, but I just feel like we're giving things away, and we should be careful not to give them away. That's all.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thanks, Peggy.
Anyone else? Monica Ken, or Ken Donald? Is there the Zoom person?
Ken Cool, 80 Sookie Road. I guess I'm partially here just to testify to John's character. I've known him for 20 years. He's moved his family here because of our great school system. He's been a builder in town, a developer. He's built houses in Clement Spring, several on Silver Street, two on Cider Mill Heights, one on Pratt Farm Lane. Currently built a beautiful house for himself on Day Street South. He's what Granby really wants. He has a heart for Granby. He loves the idea of restoring and saving this building. That's what his intention is. Recently, because construction costs are high, he's been doing more renovations, including the refugee house across from Geisner's, which is one that he owns. He also owns, with Brian Borco, the old mobile station, and that group buildings up there on North Granby Center. When he bought the property from the Dunn family, people said it was known as the Shattuck House. So actually, Aaron Draper Shattucks heirs owned this house after he passed away. It is a significant house, and what John wants to do is restore it and repurpose it so it'll stay a beautiful historic building. He is willing to become a part of the historic, the town Historic District if they approve that, and that would put all kinds of restrictions on what he can do to the place. But he's planning on doing just what he said he's going to do and keeping it. He's going to put so much money into those renovations he showed you. He's not going to be able to flip it. He's not going to want to sell it because it had so much in it, and no one's going to want to buy it if he's got too much into it. So all of these renovations he's talking about doing are really an investment in Granby Center. And I've been in real estate almost 50 years. I started in 1975. Gerald Ford was president when I got my real estate license. The principle of real estate is highest and best use. The purpose of planning is to really look forward, and what is the best thing looking forward for the, for the community. Many of the houses that were listed, the Dwyer, Dr. Dwyer's house, which is Brignell's property now, Brignell now owns that whole section there, that house, the two rentals, he owns that whole block. None of those are owned by families anymore. There are basically no homes left in the center of town that are owned by families that are on either Hartford Avenue or East Granby Road or from Brignell's place north. So old buildings just are not attractive, I can tell you from the real estate business. You're not going to get a young family to buy the Shattuck House there. It's got lead paint, it's got steam heat, it's, you know, it's not a family house, and yes, it's a busy quarter, but to ask them to live there, a family to live there with kids on two-state highways, it's not going to happen. So some reuse, some repurposing of that lot is going to happen. One use that John did point out is that it does, an allowable use in the Center Edge Zone is elderly housing. Congregate housing is something that he doesn't need a zone change for, but that's going to mean removing... But that's going to mean removing the buildings that are there. A lot of parking, a lot of new construction. And, you know, is that something that we would rather see there? Rather than the very limited use that he's planning to do to it? A lot of what I was planning on saying has been already covered. So let me just, I guess the last thing really, just to sum it up, is that we're really talking about looking at the past, present, and future. So the past is the history of the house and how it's been used. The present is the current conditions that owning property in Granby is. There's an overabundance of retail and commercial space. There's a total lack of housing. There's even a greater lack of housing that people can afford. And so, and looking forward, he's willing to join the historic district to put all those properties on it and preserve it. So it seems like a wonderful opportunity for you to approve, basically, that that property will be there for the indefinite future if you allow him to do this very minimal. It requires a zone change, basically, because we don't allow two and three family homes in Granby. So a two-family home is, is an apartment building or it's multifamily. There's no place in Granby where it's just outright allowed except for commercial. So it isn't something. All of these buildings that, yes, are poorly maintained, have been there for a long time and have, you know, and they keep flipping them. John's not that kind of guy. I mean, if you talk to the building official, you know, he does really good work. His word is his bond. I've been working with him for years. I can do business with him on a handshake. He says he's going to do something, he's going to do it. So I'd like you to approve his application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
My name is Todd Dibber. I live at 102 Hungary Road in Granby. I just have a couple thoughts. One thing I'd like to ask you, so I have a clarification on the zone, what the center zone is and the purpose of it. Because I understand that the little Dottie Home Office and Brignell's can use for professional offices, is that correct? And not apartments?
Yes. So those are the center common zone, so they can be used.
And that can apply to the same houses down Salmon Brook Street?
So I'm sorry, so center commons is business or professional office by a special permit?
Oh, by special permit.
And multifamily, you need more than five acres.
Right. So in order to have a business, you need a special permit?
Mm-hmm. In the center commons, yeah.
My question is, if your wife wants to have an office, could she have the office in the Shattuck House instead of the garage? And then you're going to review the house, keep it in the historic district? I'm sorry.
So there's three, there's three center zones?
Right.
So the property that's being requested is in a different zone than the Brignell property and the law offices? So it's a totally different zone?
Different zone, okay.
There's three zones in the center of town, three center zones.
Yes. Pre-zoning, those apartments were before zoning because it's.
The ones on the Brignell side, yes.
They were there before zoning.
Okay. Would there be a possibility of having Hartford Avenue, that section of the property, be commercial? So you could do that side there and have the same remain residential in the family that way? Could be a split zone in that property? Is that possible?
The zone lines can, you can have, they don't have to follow the lot line of a property? That answers your question, they can split.
I'm a member of the Historic Society and I'd love to see, as John Morgan pointed out, it's a nice row of houses down Salmon Brook Street. We'd like to see that continue. And we'd like to see that as the historic district, as you had in Southfield, as you have in Weathersfield. I think you should have had it in this town as well. And I think it should remain, and certainly, as Ken said, the Shattuck House is very historic. There's a lot of history in that. And I think an office could be used for an office too, as the other apartments are and so forth. And the, as a developer, as a developer, I assume as a developer buying houses is looking to make money because that's their business. As you mentioned, the Salmon Brook Historic Society has retail, we sell history books and so forth. We're not in the business of making money, we're a nonprofit organization. And we're here to teach and educate people the history of this town. So I just thank you for, I just hope you realize, once you move step forward and it becomes a commercial, we don't know what the changes will become down the street. If you allow him, somebody else down the street, and you say, hey, you allow that person I had 20 years ago, now I like to have my shot at. I like to keep, Tim Brooke have a historic district all the way down there. And I think we've got to keep the character of our town with us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll check before we go if anyone on Zoom would like to speak on this application.
I would.
Just introduce yourself and address, please.
Ellen Thompson. I will try and here, let's see if I can do my video. Yes. I live at 250 Salmon Brook Street. I live two houses down from the property that's being discussed. I have mixed feelings about the proposal. I support affordable apartments. I think we need more of them in Granby. And I actually am a little bit more reassured hearing that the owner owns the, what had been the refugee house? Because that's a nice property. The other apartments, the Brignell apartments, aren't so poorly taken care of. It's frightening to think of that happening to this property. I'm also concerned about it becoming commercial because I don't know if that also allows for like bigger, more neon, more commercial signs. Although I'm on Salmon Brook Street, my backyard goes up to the back of the parking lots off Hartford Avenue. And there's now so much neon light at night that the house I moved into a bunch of years ago is, does not feel like the same thing anymore. So I didn't, I personally think that our zoning laws regulation should be changed. I think it's a crime that you have to have five acres to be able to have apartments or, you know, more than one person living in a house, particularly in the center of town. But I'm just concerned about the commercial and what that might open up for the property. So thank you.
Thank you. See Anna's hands raised?
Hi there. So I'm Anna Steluso, 15 Old Orchard Road in West Granby. I'm also on the Development Commission in town. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Development Commission tonight, although the commission is in favor of a some change to support like commercial use. But I'm speaking as, as a resident tonight. So we have some beautiful old homes down Salmon Brook Street. And I love the way they look, love driving up and down there or walking up and down there. Now we have the sidewalks too. And I'm excited at the thought of this house being restored and looking beautiful and having life in it. These old homes, although they are so lovely to look at, they don't offer the kind of living accommodation that families want anymore. There's very little demand for them. So I think turning it into apartments, it's a great use for it. It fulfills a need that we have. We have a lot of luxury apartments in town, but we do not have enough small affordable apartments. And, and this will, this will help that. And having a coffee shop in the old prep shop, I think that's a great idea. We could do with more businesses in town. So I'm, I'm in favor of this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Anyone else on Zoom? Anyone else in the room? If not, the applicant can come back forward. Let the comment and any of the.
Sure. Yeah. Again, John Pigliaro, 19th Street South. I guess in regards to absentee ownership, that is not me. I'm a hands-on individual. My wife will be on premises, hopefully. There's a honeydew list at home, there's going to be a honeydew list here as well. As Ken mentioned, I definitely am willing to be part of the Granby Historical Society. I know there's conversations about how to organize ways to enforce and preserve the property on the exterior. I'm 100% supportive of that. I love what the Historical Society does and I support it fully. My intention here, again, is, is to keep the characteristics of the house intact and to keep the audience of Granby Center intact as well. So.
I had a question for you, so one of the Todd had brought up. If the Salmon Brook side of your property, say the front porch or front sidewalk was, the zone line was drawn there instead of the lot line to keep it in a different, more restrictive zone for the street front, would that be something you'd be interested in? Just throwing it as an idea.
Yes, yes.
It's an interesting concept you brought up.
Yeah. Yeah, I know there's been some talk too along the right-hand side of the property to prevent like further development of connecting existing properties from there. So I did meet with the economic committee, we met with the Historical Society, and we've tried to take recommendations and build it into this proposal.
I have a couple of comments. Brian Heno, head of the survey, here to speak on behalf of the applicant. Someone brought up the affordable housing or affordable rentals. And Johnson, he's been charged $1,200 a month per unit. And they brought up the Grand. And the Grand costs $1,900 a month for 760 square foot, one bedroom, and up to $3,400 a month for a three-bedroom. The single-family homes behind the Grand, built on slab, all electric utilities, some of them 2,300 feet, go for $5,400 a month. So affordable renting in, that's what he's looking at. Another question was traffic and safety. Right now, there are three curb cuts. The state couldn't take them away because they're existing. They redid the roads. But if we bring a site plan in to redo it, we will redo the traffic patterns and get rid of at least one of the entrances and hopefully make a deal with the neighbor behind us and use that for access also. I believe the town just approved, is approving, we're seeing an application for the same thing behind the barn and dress rooms. So that is something that people have been discussing in the center of town, what landlords discuss. So that is, you know, a safety issue for traffic and things like that. So that is something that the applicant would move forward to. And we've also heard about the Development Commission and how something might be coming down the line. But he can't wait forever to do something with the property. Because if it just sits there and he doesn't repair it and fix it.
Just a point, you said Development Commission, do you mean the Center Study Commission?
Yes, yes.
All right, I didn't want to put words here on my, was that a statement?
Yes, yes. And yes, we heard all that before, that yes, they, they might be coming down the line with something, but it could be a year, it could be two years, or maybe it could be six months, but no one knows. So that's why some changes would come out.
Don't sit down yet, John. We've been open for admission questions.
Question, Captain. Could you explain when you say that you're open to enrolling into the Historical Society? What does that mean exactly? Could you clarify that?
Yes, so there was conversation when I met with the Historical Society that they were discussions with ways to preserve the property along City Brook Street, meaning what you can do to the exterior of the building. Meaning, a good example would be, okay, it's currently, it's clapboard siding today. I can't just go up and throw, you know, vinyl siding on a structure that has detailed cornices and corners and I'd have to use like material to the place and repair it, which is my intention anyway.
And by joining, if you did join the society, would that prevent you from just throwing your hands in the air and just tearing the whole place down?
That I don't know, I can't speak. But again, that's not my intention at all. I don't plan to invest and improve the property only to knock it down.
If I can just clarify, when it comes to joining the Historical Society, I believe the reference is there has been some discussion or some interest expressed about forming a local historic district, which would have a commission and they would adopt regulations where any exterior changes would have to go to them for review and approval. There would have to be a vote by, you know, members within the proposed district to establish that district. So I think that's what the, what the comment is about.
Okay, thank you.
Homeowners Association comment. And that is something, just to clarify, so that starts with the Board of Selectmen, there's been no further discussions about that. I think the idea was merely brought up by members of the Salmon Brook Historical Society and they presented to the Granby Center group about it.
Get on, Steve.
Questions about the application?
I'm just thinking about it. I don't know. I don't know.
It's a tough one.
I'll ask a question. This is a zone change, right? It's not, what would be your suggestions? And again, when I say this, it's not on you, it's when we make a zone change, we can't predicate the zone change based on what John said. He's going to do this, he's going to, you could get the zone change and sell it the day after. What's your, if you looked at the regs I have about what protects that property if we did change the zone? We have one property that's in the historic district in the Commercial Center, correct? Two-part place?
Correct.
So we have one existing property, so we do have a historical district. Have you thought about that? We've heard concerns about protecting the historical nature if it goes commercial center?
I guess, can you re-ask the question?
But what would be the answer to, how do you keep this historic if we change the zone? What gives protections to that property?
I mean, currently, I don't believe anything is in place to protect it.
We have the historical, so there's an historical overlaying regulations today, which you referenced.
Recommendations.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Recommendations.
I mean, for me, but, I mean, I wouldn't plan on putting this much back in improvement into the house, not wanting to restore and protect the house. That's just my word and my plan. But to your point, like I believe today, if I wanted to, to Ken's point, could knock the house down and all the structures and repurpose it for elderly housing and put it back on the market. That's not my plan. If it was, I would have done it the day after I bought it.
So I want to make a comment relative to the Chair's question, because I think there's some confusion about what I'm hearing, at least from my perspective here. And at the end, I look to you to clarify. You prepared a great package. Moving this particular property, we just have to talk about this one property, from the zone it's in now to the proposed zone, affords no more or less protection that's already in place today. You artfully stated in here that the center edge and center commercial zone allow for commercial use and that however, that's not the clause I wanted, that the property will continue to, the property is still protected by the comprehensive Granby Center criteria, including the historic overlay guidelines. the comprehensive Granby Center criteria, including the historic overlay guidelines. The same rules will be in place if the property moves from one zone to the other. It will get no benefit, no further protection or less protection than it has today, including the applicant's pointing out that it can't be torn down.
Right. So the zoning regulations, so there are three zones within the Granby Center zone. There's the center edge, commercial center, and center common. In addition to those three zones, there's kind of overarching Granby Center zone criteria that applies to all properties within that zone, or within those three zones. At the same time, you have the historic overlay district, which includes properties that fall across all three zones. That historic district overlay criteria applies regardless of the underlying zone.
Correct.
And that, again, so the property can move, you know, zoning designations by action of this commission, and that historic overlay criteria still stays in place.
And I thank you for that, because what I'm hearing tonight is that I believe there are some thoughts out there that by moving this, some switch happens and something bad can happen. And I don't really think that that is the case. And I want to make sure the commission is clear on that. It will have the exact same protections as it has today.
I think, Eric, I think what folks are nervous about is maybe the commission. If we do grant this and somebody were to come in with a different application, they'd come in for something far more commercial in that area.
But they would still have to follow the historical guidelines.
They still would have to go, yes, and they'd also have to go through special permit, which we hope that the commission would hang in their tough and understand that this has just gone from one zone to the other, and it needs to be that transition, that gentle change, not a rapid change.
That's right.
Restaurants are permitted use in commercial center.
Yeah.
Not, you don't need a special permit, they're permitted. And they're not in center edge. So if somebody came in with an application to demolish the house and put a Kentucky Fried Chicken there, would that be lawful?
No. So restaurant limited seating is allowed by right. And so a limited seating restaurant is... A restaurant, okay, less than 1,000 square feet, seating capacity is 16 or less, hours are between 6:00 AM and 10:30, no walk-up window and no drive-through. So I guess if you have a small KFC, it could do it, but without a drive-through.
And it would still, Abby, to Commissioner Myers' point, it's still in the historic overlay, so if the lot was vacant, it still has to conform to the design criteria.
Well, so that's a good question, because there really, aside from site criteria, like location of parking and whatnot, in terms of new building construction, in my opinion, the, in looking at these regulations in detail, there really is no strict design criteria for new construction. It mostly speaks to renovation. Now, with that said, there is language in here that, you know, the applicant, you know, should look to other architectural details within the center area when designing their building, but it's not a strict mandate. You know, there's no...
And that's all the zones?
Correct.
So it doesn't, it could be anywhere in Salmon Brook Street that applies to that statement?
Yeah, just to note, the property square footage is well under 1,000 square feet. For the print shop, I believe it's about 700.
Yeah, I think when it comes to new, you know, there's language in there about, you know, basic conformity with the surrounding area. So there's, you know, again, some language in there, but nothing specific.
We need to look on our regulations, don't we?
Questions?
No.
Nope. You guys asked with ones. Any other members of the public, anything to add? Come on up, Peggy.
Peggy LaRoe, Salmon, Reed Hill Road. This last part of the discussion has gotten a little confusing. As I look at the chart that was presented in the package, permitted and special permit uses, the last maybe 10 things on that list look pretty substantially different to me than what is currently permitted in the center edge zone. And I guess that gets a little more confusing because it doesn't seem to be the focus of any discussion. So I'll just ask you to look at those last 10 things. I mean, there's other constraints. No, I don't think anyone's really going to put a movie theater there with a maximum of 80 seats, but some of those other things are possible. And I have less faith in the special permit process than you do. This commission, past 10 years, is probably, you know, I probably haven't disagreed with all that much, but I remember a time when things have been different, and they will get different again. So I think it should be more originally scrutinized what could happen here.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll play devil's advocate. So let's say in a year...
Just Bill, just say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill Ross, 239 Salmon Brook Street. Let's say we want to convert our... We have a 3,600 square foot house. My wife and I live there with our dog. We want to convert it to five apartments. I can come before the commission. And what reason would you give me not to do that since you're doing it to this property? What would be the logical reason?
You're not in the zone.
Well, I'm, I would apply for a commercial zone. I'm only two houses down. That's what worries me. His plan looks pretty good. I must admit. I've talked to John before. It looks like a pretty good plan. But it just, where it is, it just kind of bugs me. I can just see it happening down the street. Maybe not a year, maybe not five years, but at some point, you know, getting tired of mowing all the grass and, you know, it's a big house. You only use so many bathrooms.
Bill, was your house once a bed and breakfast?
Yes, it was. And we lived there, yeah. Another thing with zoning, Airbnbs have become more popular than bed and breakfast. I think you need to look at the zoning and maybe allow some people to convert their houses to Airbnbs. Usually, Airbnbs people don't live there. It's, you know, it's...
There's no restriction on Airbnbs. You have an Airbnb in any house there, right, Abby?
I don't think so.
Rather not get into the Airbnbs.
No, just, I'm not going to get into Airbnb discussion, but let's just say that you could Airbnb your house to one family today.
To one family?
In my opinion. I'm not speaking for the commission today, even though I'm on the record. Bill, one question, just from the Historical Society perspective. Did you, the applicant said that he did speak to you. Did you guys meet together?
We did, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and you clarified, Abby clarified the distinct difference between the local historic district and the Historical Society.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll just, we'll let the applicant come up one more time, and then we'll wrap it up.
Brian Heno again from Dental Enzo Bank. John, the chairman spoke about...
Oh, get off the microphone.
Riziri, something like that.
You spoke about not doing a zone change on the entire property. And we had discussed that a couple of weeks ago, but did not move forward with it. But if that's something the commission would entertain, we could leave the south 30 feet of the property as center edge. And we could leave the 50 feet along Salmon Brook as center edge. And that's something that we're willing to do to move forward. And just to answer John's question about, you know, can he do it? No, that's called spot zoning. You can't do that. We're not spot zoning here. We're just extending the zone to where we touch. So...
But let me ask you a question. If the property, which is single-family, which is immediately next door, not two houses away, but immediately next door, comes in front of us the week after we grant your application and says, "I now border on the commercial center zone," why are you not letting me be rezoned?
That's why we're willing to leave the 30 feet as center edge, but the property to our south still borders the center, center commercial zone to the rear. They have a commercial closet behind them. This will add them some protection, or it will add some protection to the neighborhood because they think we're going to, you know, keep going south with the center commercial zone, and we're willing to stop and not make all of our property center commercial. It will stop along Salmon Brook, but that doesn't mean the person to the south that lives in a single-family home can't come to you and say, "Look, I've got commercial zone behind me." Anyone could bring an application.
Anything else? John, anything? You giving the last word?
No, thank you.
Abby, any staff reasons we need to keep the hearing open?
No.
Commission, are you okay to close the hearing? At this time, we're going to close the public hearing. The commission has up to 65 days to render its decision. Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's input. Okay, next on the agenda is receive applications in scheduled hearings. You see, Abby, you got one for site plan modification?
Yes, we have an application seeking a site plan modification to locate a prefabricated shed at 18 Hartford Avenue. This is adjacent to the patio that was formerly Ford Ed's, so it's under new ownership, and the folks there would like some additional storage on-site. So if the commission is in agreement, that could be scheduled for April 23rd. And I would also just like to note, we made an error with the 371 North Granby Road special permit. It was advertised as 369, so we had to rerun that notice for the outdoor storage there. So those two applications would be on the 23rd.
Follow me. 23rd it is? Okay. Next is consideration of applications. We've concluded the hearing. We've concluded three hearings tonight. My suggestion, unless you want to, is on the woodworking facility on 563 and the zone change we just heard. I'd like to think about those and digest it before we have our discussion. If anybody wants to start that discussion tonight, I'm open for it.
I kind of think it's a good idea just to begin our discussion, because then we can begin clarifying what's on our mind, and then we can go home and digest, but...
That's fine.
Well, it's really fresh, I think, sometimes.
We'll start, we'll go over it. We can do the first one, the 563. Go ahead, Paula.
Go ahead. Okay, that's what I get for opening my trap. All right, let's see. Back to my notes here. I still have... I still think a sawmill, what he's accomplishing there is a small sawmill, and I don't think it belongs in the commercial area. I think all that he's doing with his woodworking and all of that, if he can take that log cutter, a big log cutter, and do his work on his big logs off-campus and bring them in and pile them, that's fabulous. But I personally just think it's just, it doesn't look like the zone. It's not what you see in that zone, and it's not probably what people want to see. And that's kind of worrying.
Just so you understand where you are, Paula, are you saying that proposed condition number one would be entirely eliminated? That would be where I think you were going in some of your earlier comments, and that's where I, that's where I end up. I would just eliminate it entirely. I don't want to fiddle around with somebody sawing for 40 minutes and, or an hour and two minutes and getting a call to the zoning enforcement officer. Just eliminate it. That way, that way it's clear that it is not an industrial zone.
Then do we exclude the log storage, too?
That's a closer call. But I, to tell you the truth, when you look at the whole site with all those logs there, it is the most, it is really industrial-looking.
Yes.
It just is, and I would be in favor of eliminating the log storage, too. I think another site would be more appropriate.
His planks that he's already cut up in that, we had it on Simmsbury Road, McLean's cut some trees, and they were out there cutting their plank. So that's perfect. They did it outside, and nobody bothered.
If he built the big storage shed like he wanted to, to put that sawmill inside enclosed, would you agree to that?
They'd have to change the regulations.
Okay.
That's, I mean, I'm not saying...
No, I'm just saying, I'm from everything, you know...
That's a regulation change, because I don't see it fitting, I don't, it's not an accessory used to a commercial zone.
Gotcha.
And I think somebody pointed out, and I don't have my book with me, that the industrial zone actually says sawmilling.
It does.
So that even reinforces me that it's not even in the commercial zone, without it being specifically...
And it's also the log storage. Those great huge trucks coming in and...
No.
That's industrial. That's not commercial.
For the record, I was reading the industrial zone because somebody had made a comment that sawmilling, it's not lumberyard.
Oh, lumberyard.
Yeah. So there's no, there's nothing that says...
I think there's enough gray area in the industrial regulation that we could probably fit it in somewhere, but just for the record, I don't think I spotted sawmilling. I looked.
Lumberyard is a prohibited use.
Prohibited from industrial use.
In the industrial zone, but not in commercial zone.
I would consider possibly, if you want to really get nitty-gritty on accessory use, certainly sawmilling could be an accessory used to a lumberyard.
Yeah.
So I think, I think you get it in the industrial zone.
I mean, you look at where Small Town Septic is and the beautiful job he did with his berm and all. That's where he should be doing something like that. That's that kind of site.
I guess if it didn't look like it looked.
There was no effort to even...
Again, I think that... But then we do have what you said with deregulation, and it's actually excluded, so...
I think the appearance is not as good-looking, and it hasn't gotten better since we started this, and normally I would think it would improve as the process went on.
And the berm seems strange, because really that's just his leftover cuttings. It's not anything that's been put up to be beautiful for the neighbors with interesting plantings and all. It's just something that's going to rot over the next few years.
No, I think at that sidewalk, we noticed in the northwestern corner, it seems to be, have become a dump site for the material that's not being used at all in the property. It's kind of being pushed over the edge. So there's a landscaping issue associated with that berm, and it's just not fair to the neighborhood behind as well that, you know, it seems like the garbage is being disposed in the backyard.
Yeah, I thought the berm was a pretty serious mistake in the sense that it is completely covered up about 50% of the roots of the largest tree on the property with about 10 feet of material. I don't see how that tree survives long-term, but owners have a right to cut down anything they want. So... But we're dealing with a special permit situation, so we do have some authority to require certain things.
So are we in a position tonight to actually decide what the resolution would look like?
I'm hearing, and I do want to, I think we're going to have to draft up, and I have to ask Abby, too. I am leaning as well that item one would come out, and we wouldn't have any outdoor woodworking.
So that's one and two.
One and two.
Log storage, item three.
And you have to replace him with a statement that's not permitted use.
That's, I think there's a section I have ruling on any of this, is that the property is out of compliance.
Right.
You know, this, we've been, the applicant's been before us numerous times. Equipment's been out front the entire time. The backyard is multiple log truck loads of material. I don't see how we can approve this application with the property being so out of compliance. It needs to have time to act on it, and it doesn't seem like there's any action being taken.
Good point.
So that's, that's, you know, that's, I don't see how we can approve anything.
In a retail zone like that, do the lines have to be identified in the parking lot? Do spaces have to be, is that part of...
I mean, there's just an application. Well, let me... I mean, there's just an application, well, yes, they should be. However, it's not uncommon where there might be some issues with striping. There was an application before this commission not too long ago about that.
That parking lot, since I've been going there, has never been striped. Doesn't mean it should not, it should not have been, but that's something that he's backed before us, changing the site plan, we can of course require that.
Right.
And I have to go with Commissioner Shane, and we approve all this, what's gonna make the, what's the mechanism to get the non-compliance out of there? Is there one, Abby?
So yeah, if the special permit is approved and he's not complying with the conditions, he can either, you know, come back before the commission and the commission can look at revoking, or we move to a cease and desist and work with the town attorney on that. Or there is a provision for fining.
Because that's not what we want to do. We'd like to see his woodworking and his business succeed.
It's a very good business.
Yeah, great business. You know, I think it's cool what he does.
He's come out numerous times that he does the majority of his milling off-site in a four-acre property, he said it numerous times. It seems like he has an option.
No sawmilling on the property and then...
No log storage on the property.
Yeah, exactly. Those are the two things we don't want him to do.
So in order, we talked about, in order to get that to work, Abby, you would need to tweak one, remove one, remove two, the log storage in part three. On four, there's also reference to storage materials within eight feet, you'd have to remove the word logs. Then in item under eight, where you'd have to strengthen that up to not allow the milling. And then you made a few staff comments about the site plan needs a little bit of work, about the designated area for the trailers, they can't be parked spaces. You said there needed to be some clarification of the berm and some fencing, like you said I've done as fast as I can possibly type during a meeting, and I can't get all of that in.
And I also like this, you know, it's a good point, we all assume what berm is. Berm, to me, is not used woodchips.
No.
So I think if we're gonna have a berm, it should be specified that it's made of soil...
With a few woodchips.
So...
Trees?
A question...
Or grass.
Or grass, yeah.
Grass is fine, too.
So would it have to be a berm, or how would the commission feel about the option to just extend the stockade fence?
I think that'd be the best.
I think that'd actually be best, but...
So long as it's not white plastic.
I mean, the cleanup, Abby's was concerned because, again, I looked at it on my own, but, you know, if those woodpile, woodchips, that's all refuse from the sawmilling, I assume.
He had them brought in, remember? He had them brought in.
Some of them brought in.
It was for erosion control is what he told us.
Erosion control.
He brought that in for erosion. There's some rest spots on the property.
Yeah, I'm not an expert, but that doesn't seem to be the best use for long-term solution. I think we're in consensus on...
Yes.
Putting this together.
Yeah. All right, we'll continue that discussion at our next meeting on the 23rd. The next one was the sign at 280 Salmon Brook Street, outside of the wall discussion, which thank you, Abby, because I get continued questions from the public about that. All of us do. I was, I think the sign's fit, it's not lit, it looks, it's within the size that's there in...
It should be fine.
And we've approved it.
It's just like the grant, it's just there.
I've got a grant. It works for the property.
So any discussion on that sign?
No, I'm fine with it, it's okay.
If there isn't, I take the motion.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion in the second to approve an application seeking a special permit under zoning regulations section 8.6.13 for two walls mounted signs that exceed the maximum square footage for property located at 280 Salmon Brook Street as per information provided to the town in file ZDS6S24. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The next one, we just heard a lot of testimony from the change for the commercial center. If you want to start that discussion tonight, Paula, are you interested in Eric, so people have time? It's, I'm willing to start that discussion.
Sure.
I am, I guess, willing to start, but I have to tell you, there's an awful lot to think about here, and I'm, I guess I don't really know what the status is of the study committee on, that's apparently ongoing. I don't know when it's likely to end.
We have a member of that committee right here.
What do you think, Eric?
My, Abby, you can...
And you have another member right there.
Abby, you can turn me up on this, but the conservative estimate, if you want my opinion, is a year. I, 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 remember that the committee is only gonna make recommendations to various groups, including possibly this group, to look at the center zones. The committee can't change the zones, so that would then start the clock on a whole nother process.
So it's gonna be a few years.
A few years.
Yeah, it would be a few years.
So we need to...
Nothing happens fast.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but we are starting to get feedback on these kinds of precedent and ideas, and so we'll be able to get that feedback in the coming weeks about what people have given and feel about the preservation of reuse and mixed use.
So I'll go, because I wrote down some observations, listening to the public comment and whatnot. I already said a few of them, but I'm gonna reiterate with some additional emphasis that, again, there's a thought process out there that changing for this particular property actually harms the property. It does not. It opens it up for some additional uses, which in my opinion helps the property to thrive. This property's going to deteriorate if it's left. We already see it happening in our center. It's clear what's going to happen if we don't allow the homeowner, the landowner, give them some additional things that they can do on this property to help it continue to thrive. And the applicant made an excellent case. I enjoyed his presentation, both in the package and showing us historic buildings, that some of them are being treated better than others, but there's ample proof in our center where commercial buildings in all three of the zones are maintaining their historic character in various states and are being used for other uses than the center common zone, and they're doing just fine. I heard somebody comment about Simsbury. I hate to bring up Simsbury, it's a competitor town to us, but still. Simsbury, look what Simsbury's done with its traditional older historic buildings that are now in commercial uses. The ice cream place, there's numerous other businesses that are residential houses. Simsbury has a thriving commercial center with a strong historical look, feel, and presence. I don't actually know of a single property in their center that isn't impeccable. I wish some landowners in our center could take note of what's going on in our neighbor town. I heard some commentary around the willingness to slice up the property. I, I'll do it if the board decides it, but making a homeowner have to deal with multiple zones on a single piece of property just seems, I don't know what it accomplishes, actually. And I already gave my thing on the center study of what we're looking at and what we are doing, what we aren't doing. There were some comments about us looking at historic districts. Abby, clean that up. We don't look at historic districts, the Board of Selectmen does. We did receive a presentation, nothing more. And the center study doesn't change zones. This committee changes zones, so that's my thoughts on it. I think it's things that we need to do to keep these older buildings and properties viable. I don't see it as a negative.
Okay, here's my take. You know, we've heard wonderful things about the applicant, I believe he is well-intentioned, a good person, but the zoning change is forever on the property, and so you can't put a lot of weight on one person. In 100 years, nobody in this room's gonna be alive. Sorry, folks. It's just there it is. So you have to, you know, somebody's gotta be the line. As you go up Salmon Brook, there's a series of beautiful old houses built as single-family houses, and this is the edge. Somebody's gotta be the edge. If you move the edge, then the next house in the line can make the same exact argument that he made, and I can't think of a principled basis to say no. You know, I mean, I know it's a slippery slope argument, but it's a well-respected in the law slippery slope argument in this context. It's been recognized in zoning cases, it was recognized before zoning existed in cases involving restrictive covenants, that if you had a restrictive covenant that covered, said only single-family use in this zone, and somebody came in and said, you know, "Well, right next to me, there's, you know, a tannery, and it's really not a nice place to have a house." Courts would focus on, is this house in the center of the zone, or is it at the edge of the zone? And if it's at the edge of the zone, they wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't grant it. I mean, if you had a restrictive covenant that was around for, you know, 100 years, and now you got a tannery on one side and something else awful on the other, a smelter, and you said, "I'm the only single-family house left, take this restrictive covenant off of me," courts would do it. But not if you're the edge and everybody else on the other side of you is a single-family house, which is basically the situation here. They gave us a list of, you know, houses that are not single-family anymore and have, you know, other uses, like the Brignol House, but they are not in the same zone that he is in. It's the other side of the zone. So I do not favor a change of zone. I mean, we could be very sympathetic to special permit applications for center edge, and there are a lot of uses that are possible in center edge. We're not depriving him of all commercially viable uses of the property by keeping it where it is.
I work in Simsbury, I know what Eric's talking about. I think we do need more movement in the center. We need low-income housing that I would be inclined to...
You know, when I think about this application, I think about the, we've had someone come to us in the past on the corner of Hungary, Route 20. You know, that property is vacant, no one can really figure out what to do with it, and I think they want to change the zone or, so they can have more uses for that property as well. So, you know, we just had an open discussion on that one, there was no application for us, but, you know, I don't think we were willing to budge on that one at that given time.
That was for like an intense...
Yeah, that was for a really intense environment.
But it was, would it require a zone change?
No.
No.
It would require...
It was a text amendment.
A text amendment.
Text amendment. To allow, because right now there's the restriction for the five acres.
Five acres, that's what they're...
They weren't looking for a zone, they wanted us to reduce the acreage so they could put 30 units on two acres?
I don't, it's...
I think it was 30 on two. That was gonna be a tough one.
Would a text amendment have been better for this applicant? Because really, he could do the limited, but of course, the print shop was already a business.
It's been abandoned.
So the language of the non, or the grandfather, is very specific, so it would have to be a print shop or something incredibly similar to that. It doesn't open it up to any sort of commercial use.
Yeah, I'd like to see the property be put to good use, though, that's for sure, because leaving it vacant turns into that Hungary Road property where you're just sitting there trying to figure out what to do with it.
Bob, I just, I do want to just address some comment again, going back to your thoughts on it, and you'll decide, I'll decide, but...
A little louder, Eric.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I do want to remind, and the applicant said it, and I think it's the, it's the, it's the hammer in the back that I think I'm always afraid of. If we don't do something, and I understand the philosophy, the building's gonna get torn down, and that's what we don't want to happen. I honestly believe by changing the zone, we're helping him protect the building, because it can get knocked right now. All the buildings on the property can get razed.
What else can you do? We don't have the ability to put in any kind of requirements to maintain the sod or anything like that. You're granting a zone change, though.
No, you cannot condition a zone change.
Right.
But he is subject to the same rules.
Yes.
Well, we had a member of the public ask us to look at the bottom 10, you know, the one that jumped out at me is the fueling station required by special permit, you know, so obviously it'd be hard to get that to fitting into the general area of the property, but that's one of them that I think, you know, someone might be focusing on and saying, "If you allow the zone change, you're gonna have a gas station sitting there."
Okay.
I'll add my, I get to go towards the end here, so I'm sympathetic to, we like to have the old houses and, you know, families living, times change. I grew up in an old house, I've gone through some of this ourselves, and times change, and you have to support the change to support our historic district. I'm not gonna mention Simsbury, but I am, because they've done some good things with their historic structures. I am, I like the idea, I know Commissioner Myers doesn't, but putting that little L does give the buffer so you don't have that cascade, it puts a spot zone buffer, it doesn't put the prickway to the south. But a historical member mentioned that today, and the applicant said they talked about, I kinda like that idea.
I would totally agree.
To give that little protection on the street frontage. You know, my concern is, it's coming up to budget season, right? We pay taxes in this town. If I can't do something, why do I keep that print shop? I mean, it's being taxed, right? There's incentives to not keep structures because they get taxed. And I wanna support, I'm not saying that I want to support to make taxes, I wanna support it to have it interesting for someone to own it. That place has been vacant since I've lived here, that whole lot, and the house has been going down. Why people don't want to live as a resident, I don't know. We had two people in the real estate market comment, I don't know.
That's because it's too much traffic for if you have kids and dogs.
It's hard to heat, I've heard lead paint. Probably not wired for whatever you mean these days.
Probably has the old tube wiring.
So, so I look at it as a balancing act of supporting the historical structures, and I greatly respect the historical society, what they're trying to do. You know, I know Mr. Ross and Mr. Morgan, and they want to do what's right for this town. We want to do what's right for this town. We have the rights of the property owner here, what he wants to do. And I'm looking how we protect the concept of, what you were talking about, Robert, which is, you don't, we don't want it to be torn down and make it into a gas station. Nobody on this, I'm gonna say nobody on this board wants that.
No.
Right? You know, so doing some of those things with the zone change and where we draw the lines might help protect some of that. But I really want to keep that print shop. I think that's a unique facet of town.
Historical, that's a part of our town.
In the house itself. Sorry, Ken, public hearing's closed.
It was the saddle shop at 1850...
Okay, you can say it. Thank you. So I'm leaning to where some of the other commissioners said that I'd like to do something to look at, what we're doing is protecting the structure, not the other way around.
And I do think, and I didn't really want to sit today because I didn't know what I was gonna do, because I have mixed feelings. I don't want to see it commercial, but I do want something done, and I know we're not supposed to rely on the good ideas of the applicant because we can't hold him to it, but he has good ideas. And I, to me, what's been very appealing is by keeping those snips in the edge, in the center edge, that does put a boundary here, so you are not so apt to get the creek, though the lady next, whoever it is next door, it's not, I think it's Emily, but the one before her, they do back up to the pharmacy and all, so that's, who knows? But this does give some feeling of trying to protect the center edge historical feeling of the town there. I think that's kind of a, but it is, it's a toughie. I, but you have somebody who wants to do good things with it, to see it used, and you can't do it by a text amendment by saying, going about it a different way, saying in the center edge...
I mean, there always is a text amendment, but that opens it up to every property.
Every property, which is not what anybody wants, or what would be advantageous. I, you know, I'm kind of...
Well, I suppose the text amendment, increasing the number of uses by special permit...
Well, I suppose the text amendment, increasing the number of uses by special permit in the center edge, if you don't add the gas station, it protects your gas station.
I mean, the text, the text amendment, the text amendment process, you could change the zone on the print shop, because that is a separate law, and that gives it the commercial for the idea, but then if you want to put the apartments, you have to text amendment. Is the office allowed in the, in the garage, on the center edge?
If the wife is in the office...
Professional office goes special permit, I think.
Yeah, I thought we had covered that.
Yeah.
Well, home occupations are covered, are permitted.
That's not a home occupation.
Professional offices, businesses, medical offices, special permit.
So I think that would go to an audiologist. The applicant didn't ask for a text amendment, so...
Well, yeah, you didn't have a member of the public state, they have a 3200 square foot home, they want to get rid of it, they can make five units out of it.
That we don't want, that's what we don't want, so that's...
That a text amendment applies to the whole, all the way down the street.
For that would not work.
Yeah. The whole center edge goes down towards the...
The old way in.
The plains.
Salmon Brook Park and the historical society.
It's in the, in the... Yeah, I know.
Salmon Brook?
Yeah, Salmon Brook Park.
Salmon Brook Park, right?
Yeah.
Yep, Jones has one.
You know, I really do, I gotta say, I, kinda like Paula, I was hoping to become ill this afternoon, but I didn't, so here, here I am. But I, I gotta say, I'm troubled that the historical society people were kinda not very happy with seeing the thing go forward, and they were afraid they will lose the historic district somehow. On the other hand, I, I really do think that at the end of the day, planning and zoning commissions make decisions in a way, and maybe they shouldn't, but in a way you do, look at your applicant. Do you, do you think that the person is experienced and has good intentions and will be able to execute those intentions? And if you like what those intentions signify, generally as a commission, and I've seen this in a lot of towns, you say, "Yeah, go ahead, you prove what you like, you find a reason to reject what you don't like." And in this particular case, like, to me, it's a, it's an attractive opportunity to do something.
I think with those little edges of keeping the edge would be a, kind of a nice, little bit of a security blanket for the center edge.
I mean, I guess a stronger historic overlay would be nicer, too, you know, where it was very limited on...
Some of the uses that we're concerned about, Abby, don't, I don't even memorize it, but is there a minimum lot size to have a gas station?
No.
So, but you could put that in the regulations.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, for under a text amendment, yeah.
There's ways that, if there's some uses in there you don't want to creep in...
Car wash, somebody said a car wash was a good call.
You know, I don't know what the size of that lot is, I could look it up, it might be in there.
But there again, it's all special permit, and I can't see just...
Yeah, it is special permit.
But it would be hard to say no if it only end if that lot was vacant.
Oh, I'd have no problem saying that. Sorry about that. I probably won't be here, so the nails will have to do that.
But I think it's, I mean, we're all, again, what we all want to do is what's good for the group, and Eric, I like your comment that the proposal by the applicant does mean something, right?
And we invited him back, because he's been here before.
Yeah, we all, we all liked the idea when he came as the informal here, you remember?
Yeah.
I think we all were unanimous in that.
We were unanimous, and I think the unanimous, our comments were we would have an open mind, so this is the time to have that.
I'd like to, I'm starting to get fried here as the day goes, I think this clip's got me yesterday, so, we'll continue this in our next meeting, if that's all right. Miss you have to come.
Should we have, have we had enough discussion for Abby to possibly draft something that has your sliced-up zone, and are we not there yet?
So, one thing when it comes to doing a split zone like that, so there is a provision in the regulations, a lot line on zone boundary, in the case of a lot line in more than one district, the provisions of the less restrictive district may be applied for a distance of not over 30 feet into the more restrictive district, provided that such lot has frontage on a street in the less restrictive district. I know.
I heard the word may.
Trying to unpick that.
Too late, too late.
And I heard 30 feet, and he was 30 and 50, so...
Right, so there is, but my point is, if, if there's a, if there's only a 30-foot buffer, if you will, there is a, this provision would potentially allow the less restrictive lot provisions within that zone to extend 30 feet. So basically, what's the point of doing a 30-foot buffer?
Because it's, we said about the creep, the properties next door can't say that...
Okay, so you're not concerned about the use standpoint, so it's simply to show the zone boundary being, okay.
That's what I heard from, from the testimony we had.
Okay.
Would that affect the, they could still use it, but would it affect the access to the other park lot if they had to go that way?
No.
I don't think so.
Still, okay, it wouldn't...
Well, we'll, right? We'll look at the map some more.
Yeah, but it'd be good.
That's a good point, though.
You know what I mean? Because everything's in the way, and it's gotta be at the far end and the backside of it, they're gonna have access to that backside.
It's true. I think the applicant mentioned the 30-50, so I hope they looked at it.
So this is, this is an easy application, it's to change the zone or not, but I think so that the homework for the next meeting is simply, can we see a visual of what it looks like with the dual zones on the property and how it affects the neighboring property?
Now I'm worried, because the public hearing is closed, and if this is more information coming in, so let me look at that.
How about this, the commission, you're welcome to our zoning max online, you can go to the GIS, you can go to the assessor's webpage, has the GIS, you can zoom in on it, and you can, there's a measuring tool on it, knock yourselves out.
Yep, I like it.
And I will remind the commission, the two public hearings are closed, so we are not to receive any more public testimony or comment, if you see somebody at the coffee shop.
Yeah, we don't talk about...
Paula has reminded me many times that I have to say no.
Yep, we just, once it's closed, we're not supposed to discuss it with anybody.
Paula said somebody got mad at you.
I know, we can talk about something else.
Okay, so, just to recap, item A, which was the woodworking, we have some guidance for our next meeting. Item C, we'll continue the discussion at the next meeting, okay? All right, anything from staff, item nine?
Nope.
Okay. Item 10, anything from the commission?
Nope.
Nope, nope.
Okay. If there's nothing else, Abby, anything else? Okay, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, we are adjourned.
Wrong.
Ken is...